Including our teachers and staff and our students and families. By participating in this remote meeting, you agree that you will not save, record, share, or post this session or any photos from this session. We also agree that we will not save, record, share, or post this session or any photos from this session. If you do not agree to these rules, please disconnect from this session now. Alright, so before we start our meeting, we have, you know, we usually start with recognition, which, Rich, if you had nothing specific you wanted to say, I was gonna say something.
Feel free.
So I think, you know, I, I think we all have said, you know, every month, actually, since school started and probably since spring, that, you know, recognizing the efforts of our school administrators and our, all of our school staff, everyone, teachers, food service, office staff, custodians, you know, everyone has been amazing and risen to the challenges. And we're really, really fortunate when, you know, you look at other school districts and some of the, you know, things that they have to deal with. Also, I, you know, I'm really, from what, you know, teachers and those of you have told me about the students who are, you know, who are in the hybrid model and how well they are adapted to wearing the masks, and how they follow the protocols, and you know, that's, you know, I know that was something a lot of people were really concerned about, would the kids be able to do that? Really, really happy and, you know, proud of the kids, and also obviously proud of the families that send the kids to school. And also the families that chose to do remote, you know, I know, I'm sure that's a whole different, setup for them, but, you know, everyone, you know, I think everyone is doing the best that they can. And in some cases, maybe days aren't good and other times, days are, are better, but just, just proud of everybody. Last but not least, I do want to mention the other school committee members, so Tim, Debbie, Elizabeth, and Ruth. You know, we've, we've all, we've been in this together since March, and I feel really fortunate to be with the four of you, because all of you are very thoughtful, and, you know, you aren't, you know, you, you are balanced, and you, you know, try to understand both sides, you know, we've all had discussions, and there have been times when we've been irate with each other, I think. But I, I think that all four of, or all five of us have, you know, moved forward trying to do the best for the school district. And I'm, I'm very privileged, I think, to work with the four of you, reading what I have about other school committees and things that have happened in other school districts. So just thanks to everybody, and I hope, I know, you know, I, I have a couple of friends who've gotten vaccines, and it, you know, feels like, oh wow, you know, maybe this will be over soon. I, I don't think it'll be over as soon as we want it to be. So, and I know we're all really tired and maybe more irritable than we would be normally. So I hope that, you know, we, you know, for the next few months, that we can continue to work together for the best of everyone. So there you go. Alright, moving on. Megan, I saw you on there. Are you ready to give us your update?
Yes, I am. Okay, thank you. Okay, so Student Council has hosted our annual Christmas N B outdoors this year in a drive-through style. Cars would pull around the parking lot and pick up goodies as they went. We handed out decorate, cookie decorating kits, stockings filled with toys and candy canes, and we had a free raffle where people could choose between eight bikes and a hand for its gift card. Entry was free and every person had a chance to win. Our turnout was amazing this year. We had over two hundred families and kids, and the event went very smoothly. And all the, like coronavirus protocols were followed, too. And Emily LeCarr chairs this event every year, and it's our, called our annual Giving Tree fundraiser. We set up boxes in the lobby of the high school and a tree with grade numbers on them, and we encourage, encourage students to donate gifts. All of the gifts are then gathered, gathered and donated to Toys for Tots. And we brought them to the police station today and dropped them off, and we had over a hundred gifts, too, so that turnout was also very well. And that's pretty much all that Sukho's been working on right now.
That's great. That's, I heard good things about the, the Christmas in North Forkville, so that's great.
The, the drive-through was amazing, the feedback that I've gotten, it was cold and raw, and kids were out there, and as Megan said, it was a boatload of cars. I, I don't know if that makes sense or not, it was just a lot of cars, a lot of kids, and everybody got something. It was fantastic, so. Great job by, by all of the Student Council and, and everybody involved in that event.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks, Megan, and to all the other members of the Student Council. So next up is we have, gonna approve the minutes of our last monthly meeting and also our special meeting on December fifteenth. So if I could have a motion, if no one has any changes or corrections to the, the minutes.
Can I make a motion to approve both in one fell swoop? Okay, I make that motion. Okay, I make a motion to approve the, the special meeting and the November meeting as well.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
So, all in favor?
I abstained because I wasn't at the last meeting.
Okay, so four, four, zero against and one abstention.
Do we have any correspondence or anything that we need to?
Santa just went by my house.
I heard the sirens, I'm glad it was Santa.
Yeah, just Santa.
Just Santa.
Dude's a busy guy, it's a wonder he can make any toys. Moving on to, so we have no correspondence, moving on to the learning model updates. I understand you have a presentation for us.
I do. Let's see if I can make this work. You guys got it?
No.
Yeah, I can see it. You're sharing the screen, I can see it.
Now we do, yeah.
Alright, it took a minute. Alright, so.
Sorry, Rich, just one second. There were a couple of messages in the chat.
Alright, how am I gonna do that?
Well, no, I'll, I'll, some, one of us can keep an eye on the chat. Tim, would you mind doing that? Just keeping an eye on it? Now they're gone.
I'll keep an eye on it.
Thank you.
Alright, so we, you know, we finished up the first quarter in about mid-November, and thought it would be a really good time to kind of think about what we've done, the work we did over the summer. It was a lot of planning and trying to think what might occur heading into a new school year. And, and so we thought it would be really an important time to, kind of reflect and gather some information. So we decided to, to tap into parents and see how things would go in, in a couple of different areas. We, just to give you an idea, parents or kids are spread out through various programs. Hybrid models are set up with about two hundred and five kids between the junior, senior high and the elementary school. In Cohort A, under eighty-eight in Cohort B, sixty-eight students come four days a week. And again, those are our highest needs, kids, preschool, students with special education needs. Come four days a week, and then we have a hundred and five kids in our remote-only program. So, and this, I don't know if it looks funky in the, the circle got smushed into an egg, but. So we did, um, survey parents, we get a hundred and forty-one responses, and as you can see, it was kind of across all grade levels. Some more than others, but some classes are bigger than others. So you get a sense that we got a good range of parents who, who responded to the survey. A hundred and forty-one total, which is a decent representation of, of our school community. So, just to give you a little bit more sort of demographics, again, the, the representation is pretty split amongst the different learning models. Cohort A is in blue, B is in the reddish color, yellow is the Cohort C, four days per week, and green is the remote only. So, again, fairly representative of our, our total population. And we kind of broke the survey down into three areas, academics, social, emotional needs, and, and, and just communication in general. And in academics, we wanted to kind of get a sense of how kids were being supported and supervised at home, what kind of time kids are spending, and some of the successes and challenges, and those were open response. So people had a chance to type their, their responses there. And so when we, when we opened up how students do an academic, I have to be honest, I thought it was going to be very different than what the results were. I sort of had a, a much more, I don't want to say negative, but I was really worried about kids and, and how they're doing. And, and this is parents' perception of their students, and about thirty percent think about the same as last year or previous years. About thirty percent think they're struggling more than in previous years, and a little less than thirty percent think, well, maybe in some classes it's better, and some classes it's, it's not as good. And then we have a small number that are not sure, or a small number that feel like it's better. And that's too bad. I wish it was obviously different, but given that we missed, you know, the last three to four months of last year, and we've obviously been in-person only a couple of days a week, and, and things are very different, to say the least. I, I, I did really think that we would have a higher percentage struggling more, and less in the similar than previous years. But, I guess I was pleasantly surprised, even though I'm disappointed to, to know that so many kids are struggling, if that makes sense. It, it certainly, we don't want to see that, we don't want any kids struggling. But I, I guess I did think it was worse. Doesn't mean we won't continue to work at trying to improve, but this was certainly designed to give us some information so that we could see if we could reach out. We gave parents the opportunity to, to let us know who, who they were, if they wanted us to get back to them if their child is struggling, to see if we could help in some way. But I thought it was really interesting to sort of see the breakdown, and I haven't, I, I really need to look in and see, is this what we're seeing across the board, across the state, across the country? Kind of similar percentages, and, and I haven't really seen that yet, but I see the doom and gloom, and I definitely get that. The kids are, are, are struggling, and we certainly see that, a lot of kids who are struggling. But again, I was, a lack of a better way to say it, a little, I guess pleasantly surprised that it wasn't even higher than it is for the number of kids. And again, I, I think this, this sort of timing question surprised me a bit. Approximately how many hours is, is your student working on schoolwork each day during remote days? Again, when they're in school, it's obviously a little bit different, but when they're remote, how long are they, are they spending doing their work? And again, it's fairly widespread from the purple, which is thirty percent, being four or more hours a day, to the green, which is three to four hours the day. Really, the expectation across the board, if you look at sort of student learning time, it should be about three and a half hours a day. Again, two to three hours, and one to two hours, those are guesses, and, and maybe it's a little more on some days, and it varies, or, or whatever situations do exist. But, you know, again, I think pretty good and pretty much where we need to be. I don't think there's any way to design sort of a program for all, and, and be able to know how long every kid is gonna work on an assignment when they're remote. It's just, it's, I think it's really hard to do as a teacher. Some assignments lend themselves to it, and some don't, you know. Frankly, some kids work forever on something because they take their time and they're perfectionists, and they're afraid not, that it's not gonna be perfect. Other kids need more time to process and think. So, you know, when you're, when you're designing these as, these asynchronous activities as an educator, you're, you're trying to make an educated guess as to how long this will take a typical student in your classroom. And then you try to make adjustments based on individual student needs. And we'll continue and teachers. Yes?
We had a question in the chat as to whether there was any data that was sorted by grade, whether there's different data, or grade, or if you, if you guys broke it down to that level of granular.
We, we have not yet. We certainly have that when it's, when it's loaded in a Google form. You can download it into an Excel spreadsheet and, and start to sort of sort by grade levels and sort by, you know, you know, all the different categories, I guess, within the survey. Anything can be sorted in Excel, but certainly we'll be doing that as we try to look at how we're doing things and how to make it better for, for our students. But, but that's, that's available, I guess is the best way to say it.
So, for those who are listening, this is a holistic view of the whole school based on the results of the survey. There's, it's not group by grade, it's everybody, just as.
Kind of thirty thousand foot view, yeah.
I think it will probably make it go a little quicker if anyone else has any questions that come up that we wait until the end, and do go it that way, so.
Okay, we also wanted to check in on, you know, how parents, because this is very challenging for parents who are working to supervise their kids when they have a, a remote learning day. And, and about fifty-five percent is the parent or guardian, and then kind of a, you know, twenty-eight, twenty-nine percent that work independently, obviously, if we break that one down, I'm guessing it's, you know, our older students. Junior to mostly senior high school, and then kind of a smattering of daycare and older siblings and, and either family friends or, or family members that are assisting with, with supervision. And we know this is really challenging for parents, believe me, and you know, when we're in our staff meetings and, and brainstorming things on how to make it better, we are thinking, who are the people that are, are helping kids at home with this? How can we make it more user-friendly? And, and some things we're doing better at, and some things we still have to work at, I think we know that. But, you know, it's about the audience, and especially for our youngest learners. It's, it's, in a lot of ways, we're trying to teach parents to do a lot of the sort of direct teaching when kids are at home and support. So we know that's hard, and we're trying to set it up so it's as easy as possible, but again, we're not always successful. So, kind of pulled out some of the, the big ideas of when people said it was working, working well, remote working. What are the things that they pointed to? And, and these five things were the things that were pointed to by the greatest percentage of people. You know, setting up a dedicated workspace if possible for your child to use. And what I would say is, don't let them sit in on their bed, is kind of maybe how some parents worded it. Like, I don't let them close their door and lay on their bed to do their homework. I make them come out to the kitchen table, or I set up a desk in the living room, or those all fall under a dedicated workspace. Again, following a consistent schedule, about two-thirds of our parents reported. When they're, when the kids are at home, and I know at nine o'clock they're gonna do this, and at ten o'clock they're gonna do that, and at eleven-thirty they're gonna eat lunch. And they're following a consistent schedule, they've found more success. Again, this covers a wide range of sort of scheduling responses. Sixty percent thought that when they check out Google classrooms, the teachers' individual Google classrooms, they felt like they knew what was going on at a little bit better rate and were able to support their kids. Fifty-six percent making sure the kids are logging in on Remote Wednesday days for support, questions, et cetera. And about fifty-five percent taking the phones away, unplugging the TV, whatever it is, you know, taking away the, the remote controls to the Xbox or video game systems. All those sort of comments around removing distractions was, were sort of in this. Which, again, if, if you feel like your child is struggling, and maybe you're not trying one or two of these things, I would, I would encourage you to give these things a shot. They certainly received the endorsement of other parents, I guess is the best way to say it. And I think it would, you know, if you're only doing one or two, maybe add another one or two. And, and, you know, maybe you'll find that you'll have a kind of a higher success rate. I know it's not easy. I'm not suggesting that parents aren't trying, or, or kids aren't trying. It's just a very challenging situation, but I think sometimes getting some advice from other parents who are doing these things, and having some success might help others, so we thought this was important to share. What's not, I think, I think a lot of parents, sixty percent, are, are a little concerned about their child's motivation. You know, kind of the, what does it matter? Again, we are struggling with things like grading. How much do we wanna, you know, put a grade on it versus make sure kids are, are participating and checking in and understanding as opposed to putting a grade on it? It's hard to put a grade on something if we hadn't, haven't had a chance to really teach it. You know, holding kids accountable with grades can sometimes be hurtful. So I think, you know, some kids are struggling with, you know, well, if it's not gonna be graded, we'll have to do it. And parents feel like they're fighting that fight, or, you know, boy, I don't have to do it because I'm not going in until, you know, a week from Monday, or whatever it might be. There's no motivation to do it. A lesser number feel like they need more regular access to teachers. They don't, maybe have the expertise, the content knowledge. Sometimes, and I've experienced this certainly, working with my own child. Child listens to the teacher when they say, try this, do that, and they roll their eyes and say whatever to you when, when we as parents suggest, you know, a, a, a method or a, or, or a way to do something. So distractions was definitely mentioned. It's just so hard to, to manage that. Sometimes it was younger siblings, sometimes it was the parents' work, working from home, et cetera. Sometimes it was moving from one place to another. I'm at home in the morning, I move to grandma's in the afternoon, or. So those were under distractions, and then sometimes it's lack of needed resources, technology, books, materials, et cetera, that aren't at home. So, again, these are things that I think we're gonna look at and say, how can we support students and families with minimizing some of these? You know, obviously distractions is a hard one for us, but resources, access to teacher, and trying to support student, student motivation is something we can definitely work to improve. So that was kind of, again, these big sort of overview idea of some academic needs. And then we wanted to get a sense of, of where kids are kind of socially and emotionally. Because, again, anybody who's followed this over the course of the time, that's one of the big things people are pointing to around the impact of limited time or no time in schools. And again, not good news, but I guess, again, not as bad as I might, might have thought. I, I honestly would have thought it would been maybe a little bit worse. The blue is parents who indicate they're not concerned at this time about their, their child's social, emotional health and well-being. Based on, you know, the current model of schooling, I'm sure parents are always concerned about their child's social, emotional health and well-being. But in, as it relates to our current school situation. And, and the red is slightly concerned, about forty and a half percent. And then, you know, the, the number I'm really concerned about is the twelve percent where the parent is very concerned. And again, we asked them the question, please, if you are feel comfortable in the survey, putting your name and a contact number, please do so, and we will get out to you with some, some support as soon as we can. But, yeah, I mean, but if you look at it, it's still over fifty-two percent that are, that have some level of concern, given the situation that we're in. And that's over half of our, of our parents are feeling that way, so it's, it's a big number. But it's still frankly smaller than I thought. But again, we're using this, our, we'll provide this to our, our staff in general, but obviously our counseling staff to try to connect with, particularly those people who told us, and frankly, some of the families we know are struggling already. So, and our, and our staff are already engaged with them, and we'll continue to work at that. So, again, this, this kind of, you know, pulls together some of the open-ended comments that, that parents listed. A big one was isolation, connection with their peers in particular, and their, their teachers, but, but mostly with their peers, whether it's during school, outside of school, extracurricular activities, just general isolation and limited contact with peers was mentioned about ninety percent of the time. I think anxiety and stress came up a lot. They're worried about people getting sick. They're worried about whether they're gonna have some of the great things that happen. You know, seniors worried about graduation, athletes worried about athletics, kids that play instruments worried about concerts. Are they gonna have access to those wonderful things? I don't know what's coming next. Are we gonna be in school, out of school? You know, obviously, we're in a remote situation for today, tomorrow, and Wednesday before the vacation. And that kind of hit us really quickly. So, kids are feeling that, too. Couple that with the holidays and, which is always a stressful time. Is, you know, really, parents put that forward as, as a big concern. And then finally, lack of motivation. And again, and within this, I would say, you know, the lack of structure is really something parents mentioned a lot. Trying to outline expectations for them, for kids. It's hard to know, you know, when they can expect to go back, what are the academic expectations? What should they be doing, you know, around their schoolwork, around their friends? It's, it's just that lack of motivation, because frankly, kids are frustrated as we are, but don't always have the skillset to deal with frustration, so they shut down, and it looks like lack of motivation. They're feeling overwhelmed, a lot of comments around feeling overwhelmed and shutting down, which translates to lack of motivation. And, and lack of motivation isn't fair, because it sounds like the kids don't care, and we know that's not true. It's, it's really the other things that are giving this appearance of a lack of motivation, that they are overwhelmed, they're struggling with the expectations, or the lack of structure looks like motivation issues. So, those were really the big ideas around the level of concern. We will continue to support families any way we can. I wish we could do more, but, you know, we're gonna continue to work at it and try to, one, build our, our program so that less kids feel these things, and two, try to provide individual support when needed. And then the last question in this area was all about connection to the school community and ability to know where to get help if you need it. And this was pretty heartwarming, that the great majority felt connected to the school community. I think twenty-eight percent aren't sure. I think it's hard for kids to feel connected when they're out so often. I think it's hard for kids to feel connected when they're out so often. And again, that fourteen percent kind of matches closely the twelve percent that parents were worried about. Fourteen percent don't feel connected. I think there's a strong correlation between those two things. So if we can kind of look at those two things and cross reference and see if we can help in that way, we will. But we'll continue to to work on that. And again, things parents mentioned. You know, on days that they are at school, kids do feel really connected, but then they're out for three days and they kind of lose it. So involved in activities and connected to their friends and staff. So there are things like Megan talked earlier about student council. They are meeting remotely. They're doing some COVID appropriate kinds of activities. And that's really great for those kids. They're helping others, but they're also helping themselves by being involved. And challenging to feel connected on remote days. And again, this isn't great, but it's 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 good. Last spring was awful. But but it's but it's so much better now, the remote days, but it's not as good when they're in all in person. Again, kind of summarizes, I guess, the continuum of last spring, we were new at it and didn't know what we were doing and tried to sort of get through and we did. I think we did okay. But in comparison to the fall, it it was awful in comparison to the fall. And the fall remote days are certainly not as good when the kids are in school. So very much makes sense. And again, things that have helped or that they're worried or the parents are worried about. Again, I mentioned the outside activities. I saw things like dance classes, soccer clubs and other activities that kids may have participated in that are either connected or not connected to school. Parents are very concerned about screen time and this the social, emotional impact on on kids. And then kind of the they're worried about the what's next. You know, again, we went remote. If we come back to hybrid in person a couple of days a week, I think it feels better, but what if it lasts longer? And I think that's the sort of concern about the what's next comment. Those are my words to describe a lot of different things people said about feeling worried about the future, short term and long time term, particularly short term. Staying in school for as many days as possible. What's the deal with the vaccination? You know, my kid's struggling in English class. How do we help them? I think the what's next is is a big one. And again, feel pretty good about this. A great majority of people know who to contact if they need assistance. Again, the small number may not, but we will get that information out through regular updates and let people know what they need to do if they have a question or a concern and who to contact. And then lastly, we tried to look at communication. And this was this parent, this question was directed around parent communication with the school. And we covered kind of three areas, communication with the school district. And that's really the principal, myself, kind of the messages from the school or to the school. And then the second is to classroom at the classroom teacher level. And then the last is sort of going back to the previous question about who to contact with questions and concerns and you know, a great majority really do feel like the communication is timely and clear from the school principals, from myself, which which feels really good. We try to do that, send out regular updates and information. Communication from classroom teachers, I think, is a little more challenging because you know, I think when as a parent, I know I looked at this is, what if I have an individual question about my child and I'm not I don't know the answer to it or I've asked and I didn't get a response right away. My communications tend to be, you know, sort of global messages, newsletters, those kinds of things. I think teacher communication is to parents is global, but it's also individual. So, you know, I I don't think it was quite as high as the sort of the the more general communication, but it was still very high in terms of the number of parents who feel like it's pretty timely and clear. And again, people reiterated, they know who to contact with questions and concerns. This this slide relates to parents' impression of students' communication with school. And you know, we asked, does your child check their Google Classroom? And again, a huge number said, yes, they do. They check it regularly. Do they? See. I have so many things on my screen. I can't see all the things. See, what's the best way to do this? Sorry. All right. So the great majority are connecting with their teachers, they're emailing their teachers, they're they are logging in on remote Wednesdays. Smaller number are connecting with classmates or peers. But overall, the majority of parents feel like kids are doing a pretty good job communicating with their teachers. If they have questions. So overall, pretty positive. I know we obviously, when you look at the the nos and the nots, we certainly want to address that. I think encouraging kids to create study groups and to study buddies was an idea we kind of tossed around because we saw this number where kids aren't connecting with peers when they have a question. And peers can be a great resource for kids. And I and I think that would be a kind of a neat way to to approach supporting kids when they when they do need help. So again, overall, pretty positive, but we have plenty of work of work to do. The last area, Mr. Canada, you'll be happy to know that ninety seven point one percent know that we offer breakfast and lunch free every day. I think we got that message out. Just a small number didn't know. We'll keep working at that. And we just wanted to get a sense of why the great majority just would prefer what mom or dad make for them or or other adult that they're with makes for them. And I I understand that. There are a significant number, a little over a quarter, that are unavailable to pick up, grab, grab and go meals every day at those times. So we're brainstorming how we can improve that and you know, we'll try to try to make it a little bit more accessible so that those twenty five percent or twenty six and a half percent can can access it if if they would like. So overall. Overall, interesting information, but we would, you know, we really do need to dig in more and break it out by various grade levels and challenges and and maybe run another survey to delve in more to what's working and what's not. Questions?
Go ahead. You go.
Oh, sorry, Deb. I I know. I was just gonna ask how the teachers are feeling about all this. And ideas of surveying them now or moving forward or?
Yeah, so what we've been doing with the teachers is actually brainstorming by in small groups, things that they feel like are working or not working. And and in small groups, they are putting together kind of action research projects to address the things that are not working. We just finished, we're finishing up a four week study, quote unquote, to where teachers implemented some type of, at the junior senior high, implemented some type of intervention to address a problem and are gathering data to see, well, did this intervention help? And then we're sharing it out as faculty to say, hey, this strategy really worked. Here's how we did it. If you're experiencing this. You know, how can we, you might be able to use it in your your setting to to make it better. So we are looking at ways to make things a little bit better. Teachers self selected problems. They certainly understand what what kids are struggling with. We share this data with them to make sure they know where this is coming from, but it's you know, from a teacher's end, they were looking at the things that weren't working for kids and families and trying to come up with interventions that were would work. For example, the middle school team looked at designing a kind of a daily schedule check in that that middle school kids would have to be able to share with parents. And and they'd be required to share it with their parents so that their parents knew what was going on. For those of you have older students who have worked with, not older students, that middle school students, they often forget to tell us as parents what might be going on, what they might need, struggles that they're having, what their schedule is. And and I think for them to have a reminder that they need to share with parents, I think is going to to make a big difference. For those of you with elementary kids, you saw the the week at a glance kind of thing that Mrs. Priestley and her staff did. It's similar to that, but a little bit more daily when kids are remote. So it'll be interesting to see what they found, what worked and what didn't. We asked them to stick with it for four weeks to really sort of make themselves better at it and to see if it had a an impact and but not to change it too much. They could tweak it to make it a little bit better, but if it didn't work in the first week, don't throw it away. Let's keep at it and see if it it has an impact.
Yeah, and I would just be curious how how comfortable teachers feel with the remote learning platforms. And if there's, you know, if that, not so much, I mean, absolutely how to teachers' perspectives of how their students are doing, but how they themselves feel. And and if there are any areas, specific areas where they could be supported, you know, just just in the event that you know, having to go remote these two days. I mean, okay, it's just two days and hopefully we're all back after the new year. And we maintain the hybrid schedule, but just if there are any areas where we could support teachers more fully in the event that we we end up doing more remote.
Yeah, so I think that's a really good idea. I think I think the interesting thing was, we did ask teachers about how they they thought the the remote snow day went last Thursday. And they were really pleasantly surprised with the number of kids who attended. I think at the elementary level, we, I would have guessed that they would, most kids would be there. I think at the junior senior high level, I think it was this expectation that maybe kids wouldn't show up.
Just because we may have a couple of other questions. I
I think Maria's frozen or something, Maria.
Yeah, she's frozen. I wasn't sure if it was me or not.
Well, she's frozen. Can I ask questions?
Sure.
Sorry. So I liked the survey. I think it would be more meaningful, I guess, if the elementary parents were broken out from the junior senior high. Because we have more elementary students, it could look that the it could be overly optimistic if more parents of more elementary students are feeling like their kids are doing well. I just think it would have been interesting to break them out by grade. I'm also wondering if we're gonna survey the parent or the the students themselves in case parents are a little out of touch with how they're actually feeling. Maybe not kindergartners don't need to be asked about all of their emotional, you know, alienation, but perhaps our, you know, fifth and up or sixth. Appropriate. And I also
I was just gonna say the 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 first slide on it it showed a percentage of parents that answered. So just in terms of your first response, the number of people who answered at each grade level is fairly well represented. If you know what I mean.
I do, I do. I could only see the flies, maybe just even, I was just curious if the overall responses were blurred by so many different grades included. And maybe it's just me projecting my own personal experience with my child being older. So I also
I don't
empirical, like, did we have more Ds than a usual fall? Did we have more Fs? Have GPAs gone down instead of just how we feel?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Results also?
Um, yeah, we can include that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that's across the the country. The number of kids with their grades is definitely lower. And I think that's that's where we're struggling as educators. Is this representative of what kids know and can do, or is it representative of what they've completed? You know, if a kid doesn't complete the assignment, are we holding them accountable to say you didn't complete it? So it's a zero? Maybe they didn't complete it for a variety of reasons that are outside of, I just didn't feel like it. And maybe if it is, I didn't feel like it, but it's related to sort of the social, emotional stress of the situation we're in. It's just hard to to know what the right answer is in terms of grades to be able to say, that's what it should be. I know people are comfortable with traditional grades, but they are very, very unreliable to to say this is what kids know. You know, in a lot of ways, I think the pandemic has really brought that to light, that sort of the As, the Bs, the Cs, to not do kids justice at all. And and that's been that way for a very long time, to be honest with you. But you know, it's hard to to as an educator to look and say, this kid's gonna get an F if you know a challenge that they have with remote learning. It's it's really hard to to feel good about that. But if you ask me, how many Fs were there? I can tell you how many there were. I just don't think it's a very good representation of kind of what kids know and can do.
No, I just think that you were, some of your comments were that you were pleased with some of the responses and they were better than you expected. So
They were.
And subjective evidence together, maybe it provides a greater of where we're at.
Absolutely. And I think we can dig into that.
And do we know, is the state allowing kids to fail this year? Has that been decided? I know in the spring there were no one
I don't know what that means, Deb. Tell me more about that.
Didn't, wasn't it in the spring when we had the shutdown, kids weren't allowed to fail, like be held back a grade or?
Right.
What is the plan for this year at the state level? Do we know?
Their expectation has been that we revert back to what we've been doing, but we can have those standards, but how we apply them is 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 up to us. And and I think that's as educators what we struggle with and say, I'm gonna hold a kid accountable in a way that we did in a more traditional approach, when everything about what we're doing is not traditional. It is pulls me in two different directions. Like I get the, you know, kids need to, you know, do assignments and get grades and we get an average. But if a kid doesn't do an assignment, they get a zero on one assignment and it pulls their grade way down. Does that mean they know less? So they just weren't able to do that assignment for some reason? And 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 how do we deal with that? And I think that's a tough one as an educator to look at that and say, you know, one size fits all. Everybody's gonna do the assignments, no matter what. And I I'm not really, I'm not comfortable with that. I would feel really bad about that to say, you know, oh, well, you you have a tough. You know, your internet is slow, you're sharing a device at home. You're helping your parents who are both working after being out of work for some period of time, if you're an older student. Or, you know, you're you're doing it on your own. You don't have anybody at home because your parents are working and you're responsible for taking care of yourself when you're fourteen or sixteen and you're not really maybe ready to do that, sure enough to to do all those things that you need to do. So it's a tough one.
Can I ask you a question, kind of jumping off of what were the direction Debbie was heading? Is there, is there a plan for some additional surveys, maybe divided up via one for the high school parents, one for the elementary school parents? Kind of taking this as the broad, you know, we've been doing this for a couple of months now. Here's our snapshot of where we are. And now we kind of dig into maybe something more specific to the different school levels.
Yeah, we, I mean, we wanted to dig through this first, but I think that's a really good idea. We hadn't gotten that far yet, Tim. So we certainly can, can move in that direction. We just hadn't gotten that far yet, to be honest. Maria, did we get you back? I know I let you back.
Yeah, I'm.
Yep, we got you.
I'm on my phone and my computer's not cooperating. But anyway, um, did anyone else have any other questions? I think Ruth, did Ruth, did you say what I was gonna say, which is just basically in January, after you have an opportunity to look at the data more closely? I think it would be good for us to have an update to have like more specific. You know, what's working, what's not more specifically.
Okay, we can do that.
All right. Any, any other questions? About this?
I was just gonna say, like, it would be good to know. Like, are the fourth graders only spending one hour a day on schoolwork and then the fifth graders are spending two and the third graders are spending four? Like, how is that? Evenly being distributed? You know what I mean?
Yeah, when we break it down, we can do that and figure out, you know, is, is there? You know, you would assume all the time, you know, from the younger grades to the older grades, the time is gonna increase. But it would be good to see where those sort of changes happen and is there, are there any outliers in there that? We need to look at. That makes sense.
Any other comments, questions, suggestions? All right. So the next is public participation. We do have a number of people joining us. Is there any, anyone who had any comments or anything they? And I, I'm on my phone, so I can't really see anything if.
So if you could raise your hand, when I can unmute you and. All right, I don't see any.
All right.
Person for us had her hand up.
So, who, okay.
Okay. So I have.
So I saw the little hand go up on.
I got, I got it. Tashina Marie.
Hi, sorry, just took me a minute to raise my hand. It's a little loud here. Hope you can hear me.
Got you.
Okay. Um, I, I missed the first, what you said. Did you say you were taking comments about the mascot change?
No, no. Well, it's public participation. So it's, you know, if that's what you're speaking to, yes.
Go ahead. This is the time to talk or if you're gonna add discussion later?
No, this would be the time to share your, your thoughts about anything right now.
Okay. I, I just wanted to say that I, I know you've heard a lot about it. I just want to say one, one short reminder that, you know, think about how many people it hurts to keep the mascot. Which is a lot and there's been a lot of outspoken, a lot of people speaking out about it. And, um, you know, think about how many people it hurts to keep it, which in my opinion. Very little to know, people are gonna become depressed or anxious or feel oppressed because you take away their school mascot. But it does, it is quite obviously hurting a lot of indigenous communities and individuals by keeping it. So just ask that you keep that in mind and I thank you for taking it. Thank you guys very much. I just really, really wanted to say thank you to the whole board for the way they handled. Listening to all the people at last meeting and taking the time to invite indigenous people to speak up and have a say. And for even in the middle of all this craziness, that I know that it's a crazy stressful time. And I know you guys have been doing an amazing job with that as well. I just want to say thank you for still taking the time to make this. Take the time to deal with this issue. So, thank you.
All right. Does anyone else have any other comments about any of the topics either on the agenda or? That we have yet to address or we have addressed?
I would like to very briefly redouble the sentiments expressed by.
I'm, I'm sorry, what? You wanna do what?
I'd like to very briefly redouble the sentiments expressed by Tashina and express my faith. And my good faith and belief that the board will make a responsible choice in their voting. About the regard specifically pertaining to the mascot. I think that there is a really good community of people here that are ready to embrace. An aspect of social healing and change. And I just wanted to redouble my belief in good faith and the people on this call tonight. Thank you so much for your time.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments about anything? This, okay. All right. Okay. If there's no other comments about that or any other thing. The next item on the agenda is a school committee reports. And I did forward this to the other school committee members. So the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, MASC, has been circulating a petition. Or resolutions, sorry, a resolution to ask the state legislature to suspend the MCAS again in the spring of 2021. So it is, you know, it is complicated by various factors, you know, the state actually needs a federal waiver to do that, which they did do last year. But a no, a fair number of school committees have passed this resolution. And it actually was passed to me by the, the president of the North Brookfield Teacher Association. Who the teachers association very much would like to see. The MCAS suspended for another year. Speaking for myself personally, I honestly don't know how we could possibly ask teachers or students to. Take, you know, the MCAS test in the spring. I, I think the expectation that they can is, is kind of. Well, it's, I, I, I don't think they can. So if, Rich, if you could share that and if anyone has any comments or. Anything, we could pass it tonight or we could vote on, excuse me, vote on it tonight or we could wait until January if people wanna look at it some more.
I just have an observation on that where. I think the, the, the heart of this motion is. The, the term standardized testing is, they're basically saying that a standardized test. Is not applicable right now because nothing that is being done in the schools across the state is anything that could be considered standard. Based on years and years of education. That's just my observation. I think that's where they're coming from and I, I kind of agree with it, but I just wanted to, I bet's where it comes from.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great point. I mean, I, I think it, the way that things are set up, I, I, you know, for this kind of test, as you said, it's. You know, last year and this year is, you know, it's completely different. So.
And I interpreted it that the, I mean, specifically the concern about the high stakes aspect. And I'm happy to support this either way, but, but really, if you sort of look at, from the student point of view, what's high stakes is when they're in high school. In terms of graduation requirements, obviously there are implications for the school districts when students take the test as well.
So just for the committee's benefit, this question has been asked to the commissioner a number of times in our meetings with him. And. You know, his feeling is that. You know, he too worries about. You know, sort of the accountability and the idea of holding school districts, holding. Kids accountable using this assessment. But he did remind us that there's a twofold process for this to be, for him to even have the authority to. To cancel MCAS. One is at the state level where the Beacon Hill Legislature and the governor need to. Grant the commission of the authority to cancel MCAS. The other is at the federal. And. And Secretary DeVos. Has been adamant that that will not happen. Obviously, we have a change in administration, which means a change most likely in the education secretary. And. You know, President-elect Biden. You know, may or may not support removing this, but, but it's not something. That the commissioner unilaterally can do on his own. It does take an act of both Congress and the state legislature. Just to kind of make sure people understand the process.
Is anyone, any other comments? Debbie or Ruth or anything? Do you wanna vote on it this evening or would you rather wait another month?
I, I think.
Too much.
Tonight, just.
I'm kind of voting on it tonight.
Okay. I'm sorry, Debbie, what were you saying?
I don't see things changing, you know, phenomenally in the next 30 days, so we should just vote on it.
Okay. So unfortunately, it's because I'm on my phone, I can't really read the resolution.
Do you want me to read it?
Sure. Why don't you read it for us?
Okay, so this was from the MASC, Massachusetts Association of School Committees. I moved that the North Brookfield School Committee vote to support resolution number one. MCAS and high stakes testing, which was approved by the delegates to the Massachusetts Association of School Committee, Committees by a vote of 112 to nine. With two abstentions at the MASC annual meeting on November 7th. I further moved that the superintendent of schools be instructed to inform Governor Charlie Baker, Education Secretary Jeffrey Riley. And our state legislative delegation, that would be Senator Goby and Representative Berthew. Of our position in favor of canceling the MCAS test this year. The resolution reads as follows. Be it resolved that MASC rejects the calls for the students of 2022 who missed their 10th grade MCAS testing. To be required to make it up in the 2020, 21 school year. Forever. We demand that those students be held harmless for not taking the MCAS and that their graduation requirement shall be determined. By locally controlled voices of the school committee and school administration within the remaining graduation requirements of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Additionally, we reiterate our call for moratorium on all high stakes testing for the 2020, 21 school year. So all students can benefit from their time being focused on direct instruction. And we urge the legislature to act, enact a moratorium on high stakes testing for three years.
All right. Any other comments or questions? So we would need a motion. To vote on this resolution?
I'll make a motion, but it might, should I?
You can just say, so moved.
All right, so moved.
All right. All in favor? Raise your hand.
All right. Is that five, zero, zero? Okay. All right. Thank you. I will get that out tomorrow, Wednesday.
All right. So I went, I went the IT way and I turned my computer off and on again, so I might be able to get back on my computer, but moving on to the financial reports.
All right. So the financial reports are as up to date as we can make them at this point in time. There is. Pretty significant challenge getting the. Our offices along with the town offices to be able to. Take care of all the accounts and make sure that everything is accurate. So this is accurate to our last reports. At least the, 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 the district line items. Sheila is going crazy trying to find $11.37 right now, which is way more than it usually is. She's usually at the penny. But the problem with that is there's many different transfers and other things that need to happen, that you'll have to redo all this. So it's as up to date as it can be right now. Spending is pretty much online. We've seen a, a fall in some line items. That. You know, I'll give you a quick example. Some of the dues and membership. Like my line item, superintendent dues and membership, it's about seven or eight now. They didn't have the summer conference. They don't have, they didn't have some of the other during the year conferences. And if they have, they've been virtual. So the costs have been less. So we're saving money there, but there are some increases in other lines. That you might, that you might notice. Some of our supply lines are, are a little bit higher than usual. But all in all, we're, we're still on track. Things are. Well within what we've budgeted for. You know, I don't see us in any one area being significantly out of the line. There are some lines that are, you know, 200% over, but the, they're. The total budget was $1,100 and we're at $1,500. So, you know, it's not like, or, you know. These are line items where we're over with is hundreds of thousands of dollars over. We're talking a few hundred dollars over here or there. And that can happen because again, we did this last January, we built this budget, the majority of it. So. Very much in line with where we need to be in our district lines. And also within our grant lines. And again, you'll notice in your copies, there are things like transfer pending or drawdown. Received either in December or some other day, if it's December and most of them. And again, this is just coordinating with the town and sometimes the state on when the funds transfer in. For example, school choice, we get quarterly. Get that all in one shot. It comes in. In, in intervals. So Sheila, Sheila does a great job upkeeping these and updating me on where we're at and, and it. It's just, again, I think I mentioned to you last time, where it's really a, a learning curve for our town accountant to be able to. Would have worked with all the departments, make sure things are up to date and ready to go when they need to be. And we're a little behind on that.
Is the situation there improving? Do you feel?
Not yet. Not yet. I think there's still a lot of frustration. You know, that, that this is challenging and it's hard to know, you know, how much money we have in an account or has this, has this been? You know, when you're trying to sort of go through and rectify the account to make sure everything's good, if it's not up to date, you're working with old information. And it feels like you're doing it only to find out later you are missing something and you have to do it again. So I think Sheila and Mary Beth and my office are doing a great job and they're working with. With the town hall, but I think it's just, there's just a learning curve for this and it's. It just takes time to get up to date. My report, just reopening update. There are a couple of things that I, oh, I'm sorry, budget information. In your, in your packet, I included a, a budget timeline for FY22. With some information. Nothing huge, but we are working on the FY22 budget. Next week, I'll be meeting with the administrators individually. If you look at the timeline to look at FY22 budgets, we worked with our staffs. Over the last several weeks on FY22 budgeting. Thinking about what we need. We made some assumptions. We made some assumptions that we would be back in regular school, five days a week learning. For next year. We hope that's true. And we. You know, we also know that there are some bills that are gonna come due. For example, the administrative team and the teachers all voted to do.
For example, the administrative team and the teachers all voted to forego their raises for FY twenty-one. Well, FY twenty-two, those come due. So there's going to be a significant increase in salaries in FY twenty-two. So it's going to be, to say the least, a very challenging year. It was good to hear that a new relief bill at the federal level was passed. And hopefully with a new president coming in who has made some promises about reopening school in a hundred days, he knows that takes financial resources. Hopefully, we see some of that. So, but please review that as nothing huge right now in the January meeting. I do plan to, to give you a preliminary budget because you know, unfortunately, as much as we are working on some of the reopening and the pandemic business still marches on and we need to have a budget to submit to the town by March first. So you'll get a first view budget, first look budget in January with the idea that perhaps in early February, we could hold some type of budget workshop and then move to a final vote in the February meeting so that we can submit our school base budget in, by March first per the town bylaws. So please check that that timeline and information out. It's things you've heard before, so I don't think too much will be new. In fact, I think very little would be new, but it's always good to check out that information as a reminder.
I, I actually just wanted to add something. When I looked through the materials that you gave us today, you know, talking about how, you know, it's going to be a challenge creating the budget for FY twenty-two, but that it is important to create. I guess a real budget of what the school really, you know, needs, whether or not that can be funded is of course questionable. And I want to bring that up for two reasons, which is I think three years ago, we asked for an eight percent increase and last year we asked for a six percent increase. So both of those budgets were based on what the school needed. They were not, you know, I think you call it a needs base, right? This is what we need, the school needs to go, go forward to improve. Obviously, we didn't get either of those increases. And I understand completely, you know, why we can't get those increases, you know, the revenue that the town has and having to support other services. I just want to make the point that when we create the budget or when, you know, the administrators create the budget, we approve it. It isn't because, you know, we have unrealistic expectations. It's because it's really important for people to understand what a school district actually needs to function and function well. You know, one of the couple, last week, I think I was doing a little research on, you know, the school budget. So I went back to the town website. I went back to the two thousand six town report and just looked at the school budget for two thousand six. And then I compared it to the budget that is proposed for FY twenty-two and from two thousand six until two thousand twenty-one, twenty, twenty-two, whatever.
Twenty-one, yeah.
The school budget increased one point seven three percent. So that is fifteen years. And so that has an impact. It has, it hasn't had an impact and we see that impact. And so I just, I think it's really important that, you know, people see that, you know, asking for eight percent or asking for six percent increases somehow. You know, that we don't care about the rest of the town services. It, you know, it's not that we expect to get those increases, but I think it's really important that when we make those budgets, that people understand for schools to function and to improve, you know, just like any other service in town, you can't continually fund it at one percent or zero percent and not see an impact. So I just, and I'll be saying that again, I'm sure. So, um, anyway.
Yeah, thank you for saying that, Maria. I know we did a lot of work a couple of years ago around raising awareness about chapter seventy funding and how broken of a system that is. But, and I mean, Maria said everything that needs to be said, but I just would add on to it. We're playing catch up at this point.
We're not even playing catch up.
No, no, right. We can't, when you don't fund a school budget to keep up with inflation, this is what happens. And I know there's been discussion and some, a certain level of consternation at our school, our choice out numbers. It's not unconnected. And I'll just, you know.
Not to suggest that the teachers and the administrators
Oh, absolutely not.
An excellent job with what they are given because they do. And I have, since my children have started school six years ago, I have seen or more than six, however long it was, eight years ago, I have seen, time flies. I have seen a lot of improvement and I am very proud, you know, of what the staff and the administrators have done, but it's also, it comes to a point where, you know, it cannot be denied.
Yeah, absolutely. Funding affects programming and it's not to say nothing about the quality of teachers, but funding does affect overall programming. Thanks for bringing that up, Maria.
So there you go. Anyway, so moving on there, Rich.
All right, so my report, just kind of covering a couple of quick things before I hit the big one. You know, I created a dashboard. I know we've been talking about that for a while now to say what, what and how do we make decisions about moving to from hybrid to remote? And I've said all along, there's no one number and I still believe that. This, this is not, this is not an equation where we put a couple of numbers in and come out with a, an answer and that answer is this. And we're hybrid. If it's this, we go remote. If it's that, we are all in person. I just, this isn't set up like that. But the dashboard that I provided with you guys, to you guys over the last couple of weeks highlights a couple of different numbers that I truly do look at and see as very important. Obviously, one is the, the color for the town. We red, green, gray, yellow as a town. I think that's really important. I think case counts within the school is certainly important. But then some other numbers that I look at, if you think about the the dashboard would be COVID-related absences that are close contacts. How many, how many people have had contact with someone who is COVID positive? That's a huge number for me to look at because as the number of kids and or staff increases, that tells me how many kids and or staff may be infected. And, and on the staff number really, really impacts supervision. In fact, frankly, I would say we are right now in remote because of close contacts. We have three positive, COVID positive cases in our school district and none of them, which is the last number had anything to do with in-school transmission, contact tracing. Where are people who are positive getting COVID nineteen? So all three got COVID nineteen from outside. But those people found out they were COVID positive at a certain point in time. And sometimes it was after they had been in our buildings and now everybody who had been in contact with them you know, for more than fifteen minutes included within six feet is a close contact. Well, if you're a classroom teacher, that, that's every kid in your classroom. Because at some point to the other, you're next to just about every kid. As much as we try to maintain six feet of distance in a classroom, you are around students an awful lot and you are around your colleagues an awful lot. So a number of close contacts frankly jumped up to about fifteen staff members. Which was a huge indicator for me that when we started to talk about moving to remote this week because at some point you can't supervise the kids safely anymore and the number of people who may, may be sick in your buildings. And you hope not, but if they're a close contact, there's a possibility. So those, the, the, the big numbers that I look at, the total number of cases in town versus the total number in our schools, the number of close contacts, kids and adults, and then for the number of cases, what does the contact tracing look like? House, you know, in-school transmission, household, extended family of friends, social gathering. Those are the kinds of things we're looking at. So you know, like I said, the three cases we had at the elementary school, none of them were in school transmission. Unfortunately, we had a lot of close contacts as a result of those cases. So that's how I honestly made the decision ultimately to move us to remote. I did not do it by myself. This was a collaborative decision first with the administrative team. I want to thank them for spending a good portion of their Saturday with me virtually to work through this. Our Board of Health, I spoke with Mr. Russo for quite a bit of time, our school nurse, Mrs. Floyd. Mrs. This is Tucker for a period of time on Saturday. So just so people know, ultimately to close the school for two weeks, that's my call, but I don't do it alone. If when we come back, we need to be in remote, depending on what things look like, I have the authority to keep us in remote for another fourteen days. For another eleven days, I guess, because three days I've already done, used up. And after that, it's the school committee's call and I know they won't do it in isolation. They'll talk to us as administrators, the Board of Health and all those people if we need to stay there. So just for people's understanding of how we make these decisions, they're not in isolation, they are not willy-nilly. We truly look at all the information and really talk through it and spend a lot of time trying to figure out what's best and, and frankly agonize over it. I did not want to move to remote. I wanted to get through to the, to the vacation. It just at that point didn't make sense and frankly, I'm not sure how safe it could have been with supervision. With enough people to watch the kids while they were at school. So.
I think, I think we did great to get to this point. To be perfectly honest, when we started back in September, I, you know, fingers crossed, we made it through October. So, you know, you know, I know it would have been great to make it all the way to winter vacation, but hopefully
Almost.
Hopefully this means we can come back in January back on hybrid.
Second thing. Rich, because I remember we talked, we talked about this during the reopening committee discussions too. How was the response of the parents at the notification that we were going in? Was the transition into the remote good? Was it received well? You know, we talked a lot about this before. Did it work?
Right. I have no negative communications. I, I've gotten some positive. Thank you for the information. No one has contacted me directly. I'm sure there are people who are upset. Maybe they're on Facebook or other places thinking that we shouldn't be remote. But no one has contacted me directly saying they're upset that we moved to remote.
Well, I mean, honestly, the, the timing for this one, this particular situation, probably, I mean, all things considered, if we had to go to remote, this is a week that was, you know, it probably worked out well because just because it's the holiday coming up. So.
You, you got it. And that was part of our discussion was that this might be a good time, you know, to, to, to move in that direction because the data seems to indicate it anyway. So we want to follow the data. So so thank you to all the people who helped me sort of finalize the decision and get the word out. And again, we'll, we'll be looking for feedback so that we can continue to improve and certainly hopefully open on January fourth. It's going to be a a challenge and I would remind everybody, the only way that we are going to be able to, to, to do this to come back on January fourth is if people in some way do their best to adhere to all the guidelines and, you know, avoiding large gatherings. If you do not need to be around a lot of people, having the mask on all the time, washing your hands frequently. You know, maintaining some physical distance space when you're there as much as possible because we are seeing these transmissions. And we can't open if we see huge numbers of people who are sick. We just can't do it. Puts too many people at risk and and I won't do it. I won't recommend that the school committee do it and I know they won't because our first job is safety. So I would really encourage parents, kids and everybody to do their part. Spend the next couple of weeks with your, your family at home. A good time to get reacquainted if you don't have a chance and try to avoid those, those things that put people at risk. Because if people are sick, we can't reopen, which is the way it is. And so if you can't avoid, you know, those large gatherings, you gotta, you gotta have the, all the things in place. Mass especially. So in terms of the second thing that I wanted to cover on my, my report, just for the interest of time, is the new student learning time standards that were approved by the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education last Tuesday. They do call for two things. One, this is for districts that are in hybrid. There's something different for districts in remote. All students must have a minimum of thirty-five hours of live instruction over two week span. And standard to all students must have a live check-in with school staff each day. So we've been thinking about how to make that work. This is not a choice. These are required regulations that were approved. If we don't meet them by the January nineteenth date, we would be subject to makeup time later in the school year to, to meet those learning requirements. So thinking about as an admin, as administrators, we'll be getting together with the union leadership to talk about some ideas on how to make that work. That's already begun. And we're going to try to build something that allows students to, to, to have the kind of live instruction that the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education put into place with their new regulations. Live instruction for the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education is being defined as, as either in-person instruction. So kids are in school or synchronous instruction during remote learning days and synchronous instruction is online with a teacher engaged in the work. So our plan, we built it, given the guidelines that they had back in, in the summer and we are about fifty-one minutes per day short of meeting now. So we have some work to do. And like I said, we already have some ideas, but that is a that's on tap next. We're going to be actually meeting on Wednesday afternoon to, to brainstorm some more ideas. Just a couple of quick things. Air purifiers have come in. They have an air purifier for every classroom. We were looking at sort of a system approach. That was not going to work and it was going to take us months and months to get that done. So we kind of reset and we bought air purifiers for every classroom space. They cover thirteen hundred square feet. Most of our rooms around nine hundred square feet. So they have plenty, they have enough force power, I guess is the best way to say it. To cover the room and they turn over the, the air in a room four to six times per hour, which meets the recommended three to five times per hour. Merv thirteen filters are in and are being installed. Zoom, we just purchased a district site license, which will give us access to a lot of the sort of bells and whistles on Zoom because Zoom has started to reverse their, it's free to everyone during the pandemic while starting to cost. They're taking away some of the free pieces, for some of the pieces of it in the free version. So we purchased a one-year site license. And the CVRF School Meals Program got a bump in my update. It says forty-one thousand five oh five. That four should be a dollar sign. So it's one thousand five hundred and five. Sorry. I didn't notice that. And then snow days, we are, we implemented it last Thursday. Again, we did some feedback. It seemed to go well. We'll continue to, to address that. We'll continue to to address that as it comes. One thing that I learned is the only way I can see us doing a snow day, a remote snow day, is if we have enough time to be thoughtful about it and let parents know, let kids know and let teachers know. I don't think it's something where if I'm up at three, four in the morning and we were supposed to get a half inch and all of a sudden there's six inches on the ground and we're going to cancel that morning. I don't see us being able to shift to a remote snow day like that. Just the amount of time it takes for teachers to set up all the links for different synchronous classes and prep kids and parents for that schedule is challenging. But this snowstorm that we had last Thursday, very easy to tell people, a big storm's coming, be ready if we, if it comes. We're going to have a remote snow day. It gave people a heads up. It gave staff a heads up and it gave kids a head up, heads up. And we had good participation. So those are the things that are part of my reopening update, but the big ones are obviously the COVID dashboard, opening, staying open, moving to remote, all that stuff and the student learning time regulations that the that the Board of Education passed recently. Any questions on reopening? I know that's a lot.
No.
Next we have.
People will be excited to hear that there'll be actual snow days, I'm sure.
Yeah, there will be. Next, winter athletics. So I've shared with you a number of communications that superintendents, principals and athletic directors have had over the last couple of weeks regarding winter athletics. And for us, that's basketball. And after collecting all this information and Desi providing some guidance on the decision making process, because we are in hybrid. This falls to me. If we were a full remote district, it would fall to the school committee. But I'm going to kind of outline quickly where I stand and what we would go with athletics. And at the end, I would ask that the school committee participate in a vote, but it would be a vote of support, not voting to do or not do something. Because ultimately I have to make the call and I am looking for your support because again, this is not easy. I would love to provide those extracurriculars for kids. But based on my discussions with the superintendents and principals and the athletic directors, Mrs. Powers, Mr. Sloan, our athletic director, communicated with the Board of Health on this topic and I, at this point, I'm going to postpone winter athletics. Our league had postponed it to January 4th. So districts could could do this kind of discussion and meet with school committees and talk about where we were at. But I think the the things that are in place, the guidance the MIAA has put out. Don't jive with the rest of the guidance that we follow in school. The idea of playing a high contact, high risk sport like basketball, where kids will be sweating and and, you know, banging into each other and breathing heavy and running hard, masks, yeah, when they stay on while they're running. It just doesn't jive with what we're doing in school. You know, a classroom teacher can't have a bunch of kids sit at a table in the back in a small group and work together on a project. They have to maintain six feet of space. Phys ed teacher can't have kids you know, play games where they're going to get out of breath because of the the droplets, the aerosol effect. Our music teachers can't have kids sing without masks or play instruments because again, the aerosol effect. We can play basketball. I just, they don't go together. They don't jive. So with that, I'm going to postpone it. We do have a fall two season. That's that February 26th to April 26th and a spring season that still left open. And if we can play basketball at those times, I am happy to keep it alive. Because other schools may be looking to add basketball, especially for that fall two season. They call it fall two, but it's actually February 26th or April 20th. They call it fall two and it's reserved for football and wrestling. At this point, I have trouble seeing with the state rolling back those kinds of sports going on, but maybe with the vaccination and other things, there'll be an opportunity, maybe for basketball. I think it would be difficult at best, but rather than canceling outright, I'm going to postpone it till those seasons to see if it's possible.
Well, I think certainly it's disappointing, I know, for the kids who love basketball, but hopefully it will be something maybe that will be possible at the end of February, if not later in the spring. So you want us to take a vote to support this postponing, correct?
I would appreciate it.
Okay, so we need a, assuming that everyone agrees or there's no other questions. If we could have a motion to support the superintendent's decision to postpone the basketball season until hopefully late February.
I make a motion to support Mr. Lynn's recommendation to postpone the basketball season.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ruth, I didn't see Ruth or Debbie.
Ruth said aye. I mean, I have mixed emotions on the whole thing. My kid played soccer and I really think physical outlets are important. So I don't want to be against you per se, but I just have mixed emotions on the whole thing.
As you, you could vote against it. I'm not offended by it.
I get it, but I just, I feel like we should have drills or just something to keep the kids busy and in their own element. They're going to go play AAU. They're going to go play outside of the school. I would just like to get something inside of the school if we can to keep the kids among their peers.
We can do that. We can, we can come up with maybe some type of intramural after school program. We'll have to think about how that looks to make sure all the safety protocols are in place, but I think it's a good idea.
Can I just, I just want to interject just one thing and I totally get what you're coming from Debbie because obviously sports is really important for a lot of kids. But we hear a lot about sports and we don't hear a lot about, you know, theater and band and chorus and those kids don't have any, I mean, it's a virtual court, but you know, I just, I'd just like to put that out there. There's a lot of kids who don't participate in sports, do other things that they also aren't getting the opportunity to do it and outlets and things that they enjoy. So it's it's tough for everybody. So.
Absolutely. Absolutely. A couple of the quick things on my update. One, I provided you with an update of the regionalization study committee. We are in the process now, that group is in the process now of looking at the final report that the management solution, our consultants worked on and provided based on a collection of data that we went through. They didn't provide us with, you know, you should do this or you should do it with this partner. They just provided us information. It's the study committee's job now to dig through and make some decisions and answer the two main questions, which is should we consider regionalization? And if we do, who should we regionalize with? And we selected three districts at the start of this, Quab and Quabock and Spencer's Brookfield since they geographically connected to us. Our goal is to have a recommendation, hopefully by March 1st. Because there is a whole series of things we need to do if we do go in the direction of regionalizing from town meeting here in North Brookfield, town meetings in other towns with a preferred partner. Setting up a regionalization planning committee to actually start doing the work of what a new district would look like if we do that. So there's a lot of work to do. And our goal would be, you know, to work backwards from the spring town meeting. So if we were to make the recommendation, we need time to get that out on the spring town meeting. So we are in that process and moving forward, a lot of, a lot of information to to take in and consider, but people are really working hard and on board with doing that work. So you know, some information in the next couple of months on this whole regionalization study piece will be forthcoming. And then lastly, just to follow up from the last meeting on the Washington DC trip. So I think at the November 6th meeting, we shared with you that World Strides, the company that we work with, put out this idea to, you know, move trips to FY22 and have the groups that were supposed to go to last spring and the potential group for this spring to go next year. The group that was supposed to go last year was a parent decision whether they wanted to to send their kids in FY22. Now they were supposed to go in FY20, April of 20. It would be pushed out back to April of 22. All of those parents have opted out. So this is no longer a school trip. Some of them are are essentially taking a, I would call it a voucher. And they're going to be taking the trip this April as a family. It is not a school trip anymore. They are doing it individually. So so we do have a trip that was scheduled for this April with our current eighth grade. We are obviously not going at this point. There are no field trips locally, never mind to Washington DC. So if we do have people who sign up for this one or the one next year, we'd go on FY22. It just hasn't been a lot of signups. And I don't blame people, whether it's financial, you know, the concern about investing money in a trip that who knows when it's going to happen. And two, I just think the general concern about traveling. If you weren't worried about the money, you just, I'm sure people are worried about traveling. So we'll get you more information on FY21 and 22 trip, but the FY20 trip no longer exists as a school trip. There are some parents who are taking their children on these trips on their own. But it is no longer a school based trip. So that's, that's my report.
So we're moving on to the administrators' reports and you know, and I always appreciate your patience and with all the rest of the stuff that we cover. If you, you know, and usually you're, you're created keeping it to highlight. So if you want to share some highlights from the past month. Ms. Powers in the high school report.
Sure. Thank you. So in here, in my report, I mentioned the remote snow day and kind of to piggyback on that. I just want to thank the faculty and staff and everyone for the smooth transition to what we're doing for today and tomorrow in remote. We learned a little bit from having the snow day remote that I think has helped us to have a stronger implementation today and and tomorrow. And to Mr. Canada, your question about feedback, I I just received a lot of positive feedback from the staff today that I that were either working remote or in the building. So it was really good to kind of learn from Thursday so that today and tomorrow are a little bit smoother. So thank you to the faculty and staff for that transition. I know that Megan Vokas mentioned the Student Council Christmas in North Brookfield Drive Thru event. I just wanted to reiterate that we heard from a community member just how amazing they, the event was, but more importantly, how amazing the leadership and organization was of our students. So I'm very proud of the Student Council members who really pulled that off. And the last really thing I wanted to highlight was another kind of student event. Our National Honor Society has been working to host their after school movie events for our elementary students and they've done this in the past. And they worked really hard to ensure that this would be a a COVID friendly event and that it could still happen because I know it's a a lot of fun for the younger students, but it's also a lot of fun for the older students to kind of get to interact. So we had two successful afternoon movie events at the elementary school hosted by our National Honor Society. And again, just a shout out to those students for really taking the leadership and and really kind of putting forward the idea. You know, they want to run certain events and, but they've been really conscientious about, you know, what they can run, what they can't run, or how we need to make adjustments. So again, just back to the students on this one, really proud of the work that they've been doing. That's it.
Mrs. Priestley, I think you're up next.
Thank you. Yes, to echo Ms. Powers. The elementary movie event is, has been so much fun for the students who have attended. And that was just one focus area of ours this past month was really focusing on bringing the fun back to school. Having disco lunches, both for our in-person students and our remote students having a special dance party, dancing in my office by myself. It's very silly, but the kids seem to enjoy it. So and then of course, this week has been a spirit week. So we're really excited about that. The other focus area has been just to echo what Mr. Lynn had said about the high school staff, you know, working, you know, together on, you know, where can we improve? And we have been doing similar work at the elementary school and I am just so impressed with the elementary school staff and how they have collaborated, you know, day in and day out, and they're really working together to share ideas and make it work. And the students are benefiting and we've had a lot of positive feedback from the things that they're doing. They're completely open to trying new things. They're taking risks. They're using their data to make, you know, informed decisions. So I'm just so grateful to have such a rock star staff. And then the last piece is our focus on PBIS. I think it was either the last meeting or the October meeting when I talked about the PBIS Academy that we're a part of. And the Adjustment Counselor and I are really focusing on revamping the PBIS initiative. So we had used the Starbucks in the past and we that kind of fell to the wayside with this, you know, COVID year and thinking about how can we make that work in this new learning model. So we have some ideas on how we're going to not only bring it back, but bring it back in an improved way to really focus on positive behavior interventions. So I will look forward to the January meeting when I can share with you how that's going.
Thank you, Mrs. Priestley. I also, you say that the progress reports for quarter two will be going home on January 8th. I believe you also said the parent teacher conferences will be in January. Do you have shared?
Our parent teacher conferences are going to be held in February this year. That was a sort of a staff decision. Whether it was going to be before quarter two grades or after quarter two grades, and they thought that having it after the quarter two grades made more sense so that we can reflect on the first half of the year and make a plan for students individually for the second half of the year.
Okay, great.
Committee Chief. Next. I want to take my time to really thank, my staff is unbelievable and they've been remarkable through this entire year, almost a year now. That's been very, very difficult. But sometimes we forget about some of the service providers and what they do for for some of our more vulnerable students. So I'd like to point out that Jamie Nason, who is our speech and language pathologist, and her group is doing a remarkable job delivering the remote services. They've really come a long, long ways. And they're really doing a very good job there. I'd also like to to give Eve DePietro in the the behaviorist some kudos in that area as well. Gil Miller for occupational therapy and Karina Adler, who is our physical therapist. All of those services have, we have an obligation to deliver those, whether we're in in school, in person or or remote, and they're doing a fabulous job. And the other thing I want to point out is that sometimes we don't, we don't tout the kind of behind the scenes things that go on. So I want to make sure that 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 this community knows that Tiffany Klein and Sarah Priestley at the elementary school did a phenomenal job of getting gifts and and shopping and getting donations and putting together gifts for for families that during this holiday season would have gone without. And over at the high school, Megan Sears, Jean Powers did an equally remarkable job and and sometimes that gets overlooked. They went out and shopped, they delivered and and got many of our vulnerable students and their families gifts for the holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you to everyone to, I I know especially for the, you know, the the people you mentioned, the service providers, this has probably been really challenging because they, I think they tend to be very much physical and in-person kind of relationships, but I'm glad to hear that, that they are doing so well. And thank you to Mrs. Powers and Mrs. Sears, Mrs. Priestley, Mrs. Klein, too, for caring so much about our kids. Back to Mrs. Powers.
Back to me. Just to add to that, our nurse, Maureen Floyd, and our Adjustment Counselor, Jason Keller, also were a huge help in, in the gifts. I got your back. So my highlight for Teaching and Learning Department curriculum, we've been doing our curriculum hours this year again. So once a month, our, our teachers meet after school for an hour for the curriculum hour. And for the past, we've had three, we would have had one today, but we postponed it and we, we're going to reschedule it for the spring. And these are times where, you know, it's more than a staff meeting where you kind of, kind of go over logistics. It's a time for us to really dig into some of the things that are going on. And like Mrs. Priestley said, at the elementary school, they've been looking at not only their progress reports, but also looking at trying new strategies. And as Mr. Lynn said, at the junior senior high school, we're doing that as well. We also survey our staff after every couple curriculum hours. And so we did a, recently did a survey, and we've got some really good feedback, some very positive feedback, and also some things that can help us as we plan for the future. And to reiterate what Mrs. Priestley was saying, the MTSS team, and MTSS stands for Multi-Tierred Systems of Support. We used to be the PBIS team, the Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports team. But we're looking at a kind of a holistic, looking at not only behavior, but academic, social, emotional. So this team meets once a month after school, and the elementary school is focusing in on their PBIS program and kind of revamping that and bringing a new light to it as part of the academy that Mrs. Priestley was discussing is something that Tiffany Klein, the Adjustment Counselor, has brought to the school. This academy is a joint DESI, so Department of Education program, and it's also sponsored by UConn. So it's a great opportunity for our district to learn more about PBIS initiatives. And also part of the team is, we're looking at providing some, not only social-emotional support for our students, but for our staff as well. So we've kind of taken our own initiative on for staff wellness. And so Mrs. Sears is actually conducting a virtual 5K event. So we have twenty-two staff members who have signed up, who are taking part. It's a five-week event where there's going to be a raffle prize at the end that we received a donation from someone who's going to give a gift card in the amount of $50 to our teachers. So those that are entering into the 5K event, they just do a 5K, they can combine hours or distance over the week. They submit that, they get a raffle ticket, and again, we're going to look for some other events to support the wellness of our staff as well. So that is it for curriculum.
You'll have to let us know who wins.
Oh yeah, we'll post it on Facebook for sure.
I don't think Mrs. O'Hara is with us this evening. She has a very short update for the technology department. She's working on various reports for, that are required by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. That schools supply these reports. And that she's going to be testing the elementary school network cabling to switches in the attic over Christmas break. I also, I don't think Mr. Shaw is with us either. He gave us a facilities department's report. He mentioned what Mr. Lind already said, that the MIR thirteen air filters have finally arrived. And probably, this is great news, that the highway department has, has helped the school by working on the one-ton dump truck and have done repairs, make it snowplow-ready, which is great. Really appreciate them for doing that, and the highway provided the labor and the school department paid for the parts. And then just, although concerned for the future about the cost of materials, because I'm sure as we all are aware, prices of things have been going up. It turns out that our, our, the oil bid for next year, we got a drop in price, so that could be a good savings for us. But good to hear. So thank you to Mr. Shaw and Mrs. O'Hara. And moving on to the discussion and vote about the nickname and logo for North Brookfield Public Schools.
When you pack, can I provide a memo to outlining a couple of different things that sort of have happened since July, when the school committee first received a letter from the group of alumni and community members to consider retiring the Indian nickname and logo? You know, beginning in early November, we kind of took this on sort of more fully, after sort of getting the school year started. And to that end, we, we tried to educate our school community. Mrs. Powers and I put out a presentation to give people some information about about this whole issue of Native American nicknames and mascots and logos. We tried to create, paint a fair picture of what information was out there. And based on that, we asked people to give us some feedback, and, and our students and our staff did. In addition, we sent out a communication to the community and asked people to weigh in with written testimony and/or what to sign up to provide oral testimony at the November sixteenth school committee meeting, which we did as well. We were also lucky enough to connect with some, some folks who hooked us up with some Native American panel who were able to educate us on the impacts of nicknames and mascots and logos from their perspective. Gathered research, we looked at what other school districts, organizations, like the NCAA, sports teams at the, at the professional level, like the Washington Football Team and now the Cleveland Baseball Team, the legislative agenda of the Massachusetts Indigenous Peoples Legislative Agenda, and just tried to gather as much information as we could to support the this, understanding this question and being able to, to make a good decision. So my job as the superintendent is to make a recommendation to you and for you to vote. And so when I look at all of the things that we've been able to gather and think about over the past couple of months as it relates to this issue, I am going to recommend to the school committee that they vote to retire the current Indian nickname and logo. I understand that this is an emotional issue for a lot of people, and some will be disappointed and some will be happy. But my recommendation lies in the fact that our role, my role as an educator is to create an environment that is safe for all members of our community. And it is clear from the research and the feedback from our Native American panel that indicates that these nicknames, logos and mascots don't create a safe environment. It's not just for native people. It is certainly impacts negatively native people, particularly young people. But it also causes harm to non-native people by continuing inappropriate stereotyping of people and distorting the history and culture of native people. Native American tribes across Massachusetts, including the Nipmuck Nation, which is a tribe that we would be most connected with in terms of geography closest to us, have all issued official statements calling for the end of this practice. And I believe that North Brookfield is a strong community, and that strength comes from people, not a nickname. And so based on this, I believe that we should retire the Indian nickname and logo.
So before we take a vote, do any of the school committee members have anything that they'd like to say or share?
Yeah, I, I would like to just share that as a secondary history educator, I've had a very clear perspective on this question for a while. But I want to recognize that this is a discussion that's been initiated by the wider North Brookfield community. The letter and petition that was brought forward in the summer. And Maria and Rich, I want to thank you guys for honoring the process. And ultimately, I want to thank the panel of speakers who came last month. Because at the end of the day, those are the voices that I think are the most vital in this conversation. So thanks for all who, who made this possible and to have this kind of nuanced discussion. Thanks.
Anyone else? Ruth or Tim or Debbie?
Can I, can I say one thing in that as we approach this vote here? The vote is not about whether the the logo is intended, is malicious, or was, you know, made with ill-intent. The vote to retire it would be to just move on from it and to not point fingers at those who may be defending it, or, or who feel that it should stay due to they grew up with it, or they graduated from that school. I think the discussion is about moving forward rather than looking back and pointing fingers at the past on the, the logo.
May I ask questions? I'm always the questioner. Um, I just want to make sure financially, how do we do this? We're just going to replace uniforms as we need to, and there will be fundraising, or, I mean, I've been in athletics a long time. There's not a lot of money that comes into that department from the booster club. And I
So the whole idea, Deb, is to retire it, and what that means is as things either need to be replaced, repaired, redone, we would engage in, in making the changes at those points. So soccer uniforms, we, we haven't been using the same soccer uniforms for the past, you know, fifty years. Every couple of years, we buy new uniforms. It's not a lot of money, so we rotated. This year, boys soccer, next year, girls soccer, the following year, girls basketball, following year, boys basketball, and so forth. So as things like uniforms need to be replaced, we would replace them. The floor at some point, and, and that's the big one people point to, will need to be refinished. All hardwood floors need to be refinished at some point of another, or another, if you want a home, you know that. So at some point, the floor will need to be sanded and refinished, and at that point, we'll replace it. There are other things around the campus and the community that need to be addressed, and we'll address those in a way that makes the most sense. You know, our goal is not to eliminate that it ever existed. Our goal, I think, is to recognize that it did and understand that we, as Mr. Canada said, this isn't about, you know, blame of either you got rid of it, or you wanted to keep it. This is about moving forward as a community and, and doing so in a responsible way. There is no way that financially we could replace everything all at once. And that was never the intention. Intention was always to retire it in a way that we could do it, and it made sense to do it along the way, if ultimately that is the school committee's decision. So yeah, I mean, that, that's, that's how I would define that in terms of retirement. That's, that's what that would look like. So Mr. Sloan is our athletic director. If he comes to me as part of the budget and says, "Next year, I want to replace whatever, the boys soccer uniforms, because they're three years old and we need new ones," then the directive from here would be, yes, you may buy you new uniforms with budget for it. I know that the boosters assist with that. I know there's other fundraising that happens. But when we buy a new uniform, it would not have its nickname, logo, or, or anything like that on it. If that's how the school committee ultimately votes.
What is the plan for a new mascot if this is voted?
Great question, so.
You were frozen for a little bit, Rich.
What's that?
You were frozen for a little bit, but I think the short answer to Debbie's question was that this is not going to happen in any quick way. It's going to be done when we can afford to do it. So I know everyone, a lot of people are concerned about that.
Is it going to be like a fun, is there going to be a fun contest? I actually think Maria was frozen because I could hear Rich fine.
So I'm going to share a screen with you and and kind of show you, this is a sample policy that I would put forward to the school committee for consideration. And perhaps next month. But essentially outlining the process to select a mascot, team name, school colors, if, if that made sense. I don't, I like the purpose, but I would leave it to a committee to, to go through this process of of selecting a mascot and, and nickname and logo. And essentially creating a committee with principal of the junior senior high, two to three staff members, three students, two to three parents, one to two community members. And the committee would be responsible for looking at proposed mascots, and that would include student forums, community forums, their own committee meetings to kind of come up with ideas. And then their job would be to, to, to bring it to me for my review, because obviously some of the things above are things that we would want to make sure that it adheres to. Particularly things like copyright information, and if the, whatever they bring forward is, fits in, or, you know, puts a checkbox next to all, a check next to all those boxes, then I would bring it to school committee for final approval. Whatever the new nickname and logo is. Talks about the process, process being about three months from start to finish. So any thoughts on that here? Let me share the the screen with you.
I think that's pretty common for school districts that are going through this process. And I think it probably does involve, as Ruth said, you know, student whatever, voting or in contests perhaps of.
I was thinking it'd be cool to have like the art classes at the high school do drawings to try to pick the new I don't know, picture.
Yeah, the logo of the mascot, sure.
Yeah.
We talked about that when we met with the students, because that was one of the students' questions last week when Mrs. Powers and I met with them, with the, with the junior senior high students. And we did talk about students having a say, certainly elected representatives. But you can see in number six in this policy, the committee were responsible for completing a comprehensive review of any proposed mascots. This may include, but not limited to, any combination of student forums. That could be votes or other things, community forums, surveys, questionnaires, meetings with local organizations. And the idea would be to bring whatever the proposed mascot, nickname, colors, or other school identifiers within three months.
Megan, Megan Bocus had a question, which if you go up a little bit further, she's two on and off students would be on the committee. And that would be, that's yes, Megan, there would be a couple of students chosen and, and that one of them are, it should be.
So if you have three students at the high school level, one of these students should be a representative of student council. I did not write this policy. I got it from some other school districts who have gone through a similar process.
And don't you think it's fair to say that we could make the vote on this question now? And then certainly, those details will be worked out with input from the school committee, or the school community, rather.
Yeah, I think that was.
All the, meaning just, I don't think we need to work out all of the logistics this moment, or.
Yeah, you're right.
I mean, I see them as two separate issues.
Yeah. But I know that people did have that question.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Community.
Yeah, I think the short answer is there will be community involvement. Absolutely.
So, um, I do have something to say. Something about this an awful lot the past couple of months. So Ruth, did you have anything you wanted to chime in with before I do my part?
Nope. I agree with everything Elizabeth and Tim said.
Okay. Um, so I just want to say that, um, last month, uh, we had the panel. And, um, thank you very much, um, for the, the group that came and spoke to us. It was a very short turnaround and actually was a week, um, that we spoke to them first and they were able to come. They made themselves available and come to speak, um, at our November meeting. Um, we did open up the, the meeting, um, to anyone who wanted to speak. And although no one who was opposed to changing the mascot actually spoke, um, anyone would have been welcomed, of course, to share their feeling. We also had, um, the opportunity for people to submit written comments, which we did have a fair number of those and many of them were opposed. So after reading those comments and also reading, um, from the, the survey comments from both students and staff, what I noticed that there seemed to be sort of four opinions that people had when they were opposed to the, um, changing the mascot. So I sort of synthesized what I thought people were saying and, and what I felt, if, if we were to vote to change the mascot, how this would affect it. Number one was a lot of people felt that the mascot is a tradition in Northbrook Field and that the tradition should be preserved. I appreciate that the mascot has a great deal of sentiment and meaning to people. From the research I did at the Northbrook Field Historical Society, it appears to have been chosen about 1960, which certainly, especially for high school kids, seems a long time ago. Um, when I reflect on it, I think that what people feel about the tradition is the community and the friendships and the memories, that they associate with the mascot. And the point I would make that though a mascot may change, the community, the friendships and the memories will not. Um, another one that a lot of people expressed was that by changing the mascot, we will be erasing history. To me, when you say erasing history, that suggests that all signs of the current mascot will be wiped away. And that we wouldn't acknowledge that it ever was there. Um, and that's not going to happen. Uniforms and signs may eventually change, but there's no plan to remove championship banners or tear out pages of old yearbooks. Uh, the Indian mascot would become a part of the history of Northbrook Public Schools. And hopefully our students will also have the opportunity to learn a deeper appreciation of the history and culture of the native people that lived in this area for thousands of years and who still live here with us in our state. Um, a very big one, as Debbie brought up, was that we don't have the money to change the mascot. And I have to say, I'm really, really gratified by the number of people who are concerned about the budget and about our lack of funding, because it is something that I think about all the time. And, you know, nearly every year, the, um, you know, it comes up that we may have to just cut sports. Cause we just can't support it. And that a lot of the sport from, for the sports programs actually comes from the sports boosters, which is a group of very dedicated, um, parents and community members that raise money to support the, um, sports for kids. So I do want to, you know, reassure everyone, like Mr. Lynn said, um, whoever one has been worried about the budget, that money won't be diverted from essential things like educating our students, um, to replace uniforms or replace the gym floor. That those things will be done gradually over time. Unless, you know, there happens to be someone who wants to fundraise and raise enough money to help us redo the floor and buy new uniforms. So I also, that means that for those people who are anxious to see the mascot change, that it's going to take time. It's not going to happen within a short period of time. Um, and another one was that, another, uh, opinion that, or, uh, something that people expressed was that, that most people aren't offended by the mascot and that it isn't meant to be offensive. And certainly I don't think that anyone who chose the mascot in the sixties or anyone who has worn the mascot or wears it today, um, is choosing to be offensive. Um, and I think it does represent positive qualities for a lot of people. But I would point out that if you have a group of people who have been asking since 1968, which is when the first, when the North American, and I'm gonna, the, the, the council first asked for sports teams to begin changing, um, mascots, replacing Native American mascots, um, that the images used don't in fact represent their history and culture. And it isn't an honor to be represented that way. That I do feel that, you know, it's been 52 years, they've been pretty consistent in asking that these mascots be retired and replaced. But maybe it's time that we listen to them. So there you go. So, um, we do now have to have a motion to retire the mascot if anybody wants to, um, one of those.
I make a motion to retire the Indian mascot.
Second to, I second it.
So all in favor?
We have four, five, all five voted yes. Okay, thank you.
All right. So moving on, um, we don't have too much left. Thank you for everyone's patience. We do have, um, a policy reading, which is the graduation requirements. This will be the last, the third and final reading of the policy. I don't, um, does anyone have the policy in front of them for, um, so that we can vote on it?
I can put it up on the screen if you want. Do you want it on the screen?
So someone can be able to read it.
Extremely helpful.
Give me a second, guys.
A 58-page packet here and that's not it.
I know. I'm not killing as many trees though with, uh, virtual meetings.
Tim, I have it on page 54.
Oh, all right. It's just my own inability to skim, I guess.
All right, it's very late.
I mean, I'm willing to read this if you guys want me to read it.
You don't have to read the whole thing. It's just still the, you know, the, the IKF, the graduation requirements is what you need to be able to reference.
All right, so we can.
So you want to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to.
Accept.
Accept the IKF graduation requirements as read previously in school committee meeting.
And just need a second.
Let's raise your hand.
I second, sorry.
Sorry, I got it on sharing, so I can't see everybody.
No, that's okay. I second it.
Thank you.
So all in favor?
Five. Thank you. All right, thank you. Um, new business, Maria. I'll fly through. We have the annual report, um, in your packet. It's just the front page, but in the Google Drive folder is actually the document. You were just voting that you've received it and you're aware of it. So it's not something that you have to vote on approving. You're voting on that you're aware and that it exists and that it's available to you. Southern West County Education Collaborative is our collaborative. We're a member of it. I am a board member as elected by the school committee. So.
So this would be just, we would need a motion to accept, um, both the annual report and the first quarter FY21 report from the Southern West County Education Collaborative.
Make that motion that we are aware of and have received the Southern West County, Worcester County Education Collaborative Annual Report and First Quarter Report.
I second.
All in favor?
Thank you, folks. Five, nothing. All right, then, um, I provided in your, uh, packet, a list of things that are in the band room that, um, our, our new band teacher, Mr. Weber, would like to, uh, get declared obsolete. There's just, um.
He doesn't want any, um.
Stuff in the way. He's got to spread out to be able to play instruments and he's looking to create some space. And he's run into a lot of things that he just wants to get rid of, which led us to actually start gathering a list of other old electronic devices that we will have for you in the next month or so. But, uh, right now I'd love to be able to, um, create some space for. So included in there are old band uniforms that have been used for some period of time. Old and tattered, two coat racks and costume racks that he said could be moved to, for the theater or the theater group. And then there's multiple VCRs, DVD tape decks that just are never used anymore. And then a bunch of swivel chairs that are old and are taking up space. So if you declare those obsolete, we can, um, move to, to get rid of them. Either donating them or selling them or, uh, throwing them out if, if need be.
All right. So we just need to, um, move to declare those obsolete.
Yes.
So if someone can do that.
Um, I move that we declare the music room items obsolete.
Second.
All in favor?
Want one?
You can use, you can dress up next Halloween.
The last one is an approval of donation. I believe the SGN is the Sarah G Nagel or the Susan G Nagel. I forget which one it is. I think it's Susan. Education Foundation donated $500 for holiday gifts program, uh, at Northbrook Field Elementary School. This money has been used, as mentioned earlier by Mrs. Priestley, Mrs. Klein and other members of the elementary team to provide gifts for those, uh, in need and that might not have any this holiday season without it.
Rich, can I also add that, um, we, after we were able to purchase all of the gifts on the, the children's wish lists, we were, we had some left over and we've been able to replenish our winter clothing store, um, including boots and snow pants, which we did not have. So when students come and want to play in the snow and they either forgot their things at home, um, we have, we have those. So if some of that money went to that as well.
Beautiful.
So, uh, we can have a motion to accept, uh, the donation, uh, $500 from the Susan G Nagel Foundation for both holiday gifts and also, uh, winter clothing.
Since we already bought the snow pants, I move that we accept the gift of $500 from the Susan G Nagel Foundation.
I second.
All in favor? All right, um, is no, nothing else? So Debbie, if you want to send us on out of here.
I move that we adjourn.
A second.
Yeah, somebody better second.
Tim seconded?
It all said, yes, we want to go.
All right, five, nothing. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, guys.
Happy New Year.
Happy holidays.
2021. All for your, what you're doing.